I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, with the republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, in every and justness for all.
The required access are the left and right, it's all clearly marked, in case of an incident, you'll be notified from here, and please leave in a calm and orderly manner. Thank you. We'll have the administration of votes at this time.
You can raise your right hand if you need. I, Kellye Penfield.
I, Kellye Penfield.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I, Brian D. Jefferson. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Here we go. Time here.
We're back.
Very good. Judge Bowden. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Please continue after me. I, John J. LeBoutin.
I, John J. LeBoutin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village justice.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village justice.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Time now. Thank you.
Congratulations, Judge.
Thank you.
Judge LeBoutin, welcome to the team.
Welcome to the team. Thank you. That would be a lost time accident.
I want him to come before he's judged yet.
I don't know your plate number, don't worry about it.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing on the ten of the budget. Anybody who wishes to address the board on a budget may do so at this time. If no one wishes to, how about anybody on the board members?
Pretty good budget. After the recent taxes, that was good.
That it? I'll close the public hearing at this time, and I will entertain a motion to adopt the budget if there is no objection.
I'll make a motion to adopt the budget as written for fiscal year 2005.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore, is there any discussion within the board? There being noted Scottish laws in favor of vote, roll call vote. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. We now have an adopted budget for the next year. That was quick. Minutes of the previous meeting. You all have copies, is there any additions or corrections? Will you entertain a motion?
I'll move that we accept the minutes as written.
I'll second that. Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, is there any discussion? There being noted discussion, all those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills, you all have copies of the bills.
We have no additions or additions this evening.
Thank you, our sen.
I'll make a motion to debate results tonight.
Second. Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore, is there any discussion?
I just have one question, our sen, do you happen to know the bills, oh shoot, no, I'm not really quite a please. Second page in, I guess there are a number of them supplies for Maple Street, is that from Champlain Valley Electric, is that just part and parcel of what they're doing on Maple Street, or does that pertain to anything they needed to do as a result of the outage? Yeah, I think, no, I'm just curious.
I think it's just things that...
Just in their regular course of business, okay, I just wondered.
Yeah, meter boxes and stuff like that, I guess, by.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried.
We have a, excuse me, a letter that was from the Joint Counsel for Economic Analysis of Clinton and Brankton Counties that was sent to the attention of Chief Bob Craig. Dear Mr. Craig, our Champlain Head Start is currently planning a fundraiser to take place on Saturday, May 7th. Abigail Fennup is a four-year-old child from Rousas Point who attended our program until recently. Abigail became ill over Christmas vacations with pneumonia. Once Abby became better, she began to have problems with her vision. What they're basically doing, in order to aid the family with their financial hardships, we are planning a walk for Abby. We wanted to alert the village police and any other departments that need this information. We plan to begin the walk at 10:00 a.m., and would like permission to use the Civic Center, parking lot, and restaurants as the central walk for Abby. We want to alert the village police, and that's basically where it is. They're going to end at the Civic Center, they're going to start at the parking lot, proceed south down Lake onto Champlain, turning back and finishing at the Civic Center. The walk spans approximately three miles in duration. They're asking if anyone has any questions, they can call this number, 298-8547, between 8:00 and 3:00, and they conclude, we truly welcome any assistance your office or the community can provide. It's signed, Tracy L. Graves, family worker.
Need a motion to allow... I'll make that motion. Second. Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore, is there any discussion?
Do you know, Phil, are they looking for police coverage as well, or...
They didn't indicate that, no.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried.
The second letter we have is from Clinton County Office for the Aging, it's sent by Crystal Carter, Director, it's addressed to the mayor. Dear George Rivers, it is a pleasure to invite you to attend the 12th Annual Senior Celebration. This year's celebration will be held at the former Eames Building in Champlain Center on Friday, May 6th. This event allows Clinton County residents to observe older Americans, Month, and Senior Citizens Day, and to honor our oldest citizens. As you may know, this day-long event is usually attended by between 1,500 and 2,000 senior citizens, family members, agency reps, and interested individuals of all ages. Federal, state, county, and city officials are being invited to be our honored guests at the opening ceremony, which will be held at 9:30 a.m. A draft agenda is enclosed for your review, the theme for this year is medieval times. We suggest that you arrive before 9:15 a.m., so that your attendance may be noted by the master of ceremonies, who will introduce you to the assembled crew, and so that you may be directed to a reserved seat on the stage. The ceremony will begin promptly at 9:30. We very much hope that you will be with us on May 6th, please let us know if that is possible. Sincerely, Crystal Carter.
I don't think we need any motion, I've already told them I would attend.
Do you have to...
There's no charge or nothing.
Do you have to go unconscious?
No. Should.
Yeah, I think so, maybe times.
War patrolmen, it's gonna be, just fine, shouldn't it? Okay.
And the next, excuse me, thank for the help. The next letter is Northeastern Central School District, it's signed by Josie Gilroy, Athletic Director, it's addressed to the mayor. Dear Mayor Rivers, Northeastern Clinton Central School District would like to request the use of the Rousas Point Tennis Courts located at the Civic Center. The request of times would be Monday through Friday, from 3:00 to 5:30 p.m., beginning March 21st through May 31st, 2005. The matches start the week of April the 25th. We request that the wind screens be put up prior to that day, if possible. Thank you for your support over the years. Sincerely, Josie Gilroy.
I'll make a motion to allow the high school to use the tennis courts this year.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion?
Should we let Mike know about the wind screen?
Sorry, yeah.
Oh, they are now? Oh, I haven't been over there, so, well, that's great, good. Excellent.
And the last, the next letter I have was not on the...
Why did I get a vote on that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Go ahead, vote it, ask the vacation board. Hey, see what that vacation does?
Efficiency at its best.
Nor, or worse. All those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
There's a vote, motion carried.
And the next letter isn't on the agenda, it was received apparently Friday afternoon. It's from Clinton County Department Personnel, it's from Allen Gibson, Personnel Director, it's addressed to the mayor. Dear Mr. Rivers, I would like to invite you and your staff to a training session on your role and responsibilities in administering New York State Civil Service Law on Tuesday, May 24, 2005, from 9:00 to 12:00, or 1:00 to 4:00. At Clinton Community College Stafford Center for Arts and Technology Auditorium, Ms. Mary Carley and Mr. Tom Fountain from the New York State Department of Civil Service Municipal Service Division will conduct the training. This training will give you a better understanding of your role as an appointing authority, this department's role as a civil service agency overseeing your municipality, and the role of the New York State Department of Civil Service in the administration of the New York State Civil Service Law. The training, this training is particularly important for the elected officials, flash appointing authority, town supervisor, mayor, highway superintendent, and other staff who are responsible for preparation and distribution of the municipal payroll. Mary and Tom will conduct the training session twice in the day, so you may pick the most convenient time for you and your staff, please see the directions below. I hope you'll take advantage of this excellent opportunity to learn more about administering the New York State Civil Service Law. Signed, sincerely, Allen Gibson.
I'd like to attend.
I would both attend.
I'll make a motion to allow Phil and the mayor to attend the training, attend the training.
Second. Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore, is there any discussion? There being noted Scottish laws in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's all I have. The report of the mayor and trustees on the agenda tonight, lots of stuff, is the appointments, and, you all have copies of this, I'm gonna have to read it all, certainly, but what I'm gonna do is ask you whether or not you want to go individual motion or a motion to accept them all. You don't, you know, because you're gonna go individual, and I'll stop.
Accept them all.
Deputy Mayor will be John Hockrow, term one year. Village Clerk, Bill Beharlock, two years. Deputy Clerk, Carol Conville, two years. Treasurer, our sen LaTerno, thirty days, I mean, two years. Deputy Treasurer, Rebecca Diesel, one year. Attorney, Tom Renee, one year. Acting Village Justice, John Favreau, one year. Budget Officer, our sen LaTerno, one year. Historian, Donald Racine, one year. Youth Commissioner, Ray Perle, one year. Library Board Trustee, James Giroux, five-year term. Billing and coding and zoning officer, Michael Pedro, one-year term. Register of Bible Statistics, Carol Henfield, two-year term. Deputy Register of Bible Statistics, Phil Beharlock, two years. Zoning Board of Appeals, John Mock, five-year term. Clerk to the Zoning Board, Carol Henfield, one year. Depository will be the Evergreen Bank and Champlain National Bank. Official newspaper, the Press Republican. Planning Board, and this is brand-new this year, will be Marianne Burgro, five years. Geraldine Favreau, four years. Shirley Hall, three years. Patricia Racine, two years. Michael LaTerno, one year. And alternate to the Planning Board, Donald Janette, one year. And that is the mayor's appointments. And I need a motion, other than for Deputy Mayor, if that's all right, we'll cover it all in one.
Make that motion to accept the appointments as written by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, is there any discussion?
Just one comment, I know, I had been in contact with the people who would be serving on the planning boards, the reason for the differences in their terms is because this is the first time we will be appointing people, and we use a rolling system at first. All of the terms are five years, so that at the end of five years, there aren't a number of vacancies. We do it in an ongoing manner, so, if Michael LaTerno was to stay after this year, then you would appoint him next year.
Five years.
Right, so they're all considered to be, the five board members the same, it's just that they have a rolling number, just that it turns to the beginning.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Let's discuss this with all the board members, all the, all the commissions will stay the same, there's no change. Police and judicial is Brian and John Hockrow. Fire and code, John Hockrow and Brian. Streets and sidewalks is, I'm gonna say junior, junior more and Kelly Penfield. Water system, junior more and Kelly Penfield. Forest system, Kelly Penfield and junior more. That sounds like a broken record. Electrical system, Brian Jefferson and junior more. Flood control and storm sores, junior more and John Hockrow. Personnel and insurance, John Hockrow and Brian Jefferson. Planning, Kelly Penfield and John Hockrow. Civic, Civic Center parks, beautification, John Hockrow and Brian Jefferson. And library and historian and seniors and youth, Kelly Penfield and junior more.
I'll make a motion to accept the commission appointments.
Second. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Procurment policy. Nothing has changed, Phil?
No.
Okay, I might want to read this whole thing, there's nothing changed, I think, it just says, whereas section 101 P of the General Government law requires the governing body, very municipality, to adopt a procurement procedure for all goods and services which are not required by law to be publicly bid. And whereas, comments, the comments have been solicited from all instances in the village involved in this particular process. What that is, is that, if anything under $10,000, and contracts under $20,000, we can do, we have three quotes, I believe. $500 to $2,999, two verbal quotes, $3,000 to $999, three written quotes or facts. And for contracts, work for public work contracts, two verbal quotes for $500 to $2,999, three written quotes for $3,000 to $4,999, and then three written facts, quotes or written requests or proposals of $5,000 to $19,000, $999. Do you now need a motion to adopt that?
I'll move to adopt the procurement policy.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Investment policy. There's no changes on that, our sen?
No changes.
I thought you were gonna invest it in my bank. Guess I didn't, I guess I didn't lock out it.
I heard you already had it.
Okay.
Locked out, it's not too much.
We need to read that, Phil?
No, we don't. The only change that was made, and it was a year or two ago, was our depository making Evergreen and Champlain National Banks, other than that, there's been no changes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the investment policy.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? There being noted Scottish laws in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And now we have rules and procedures of the board, and I think we all know what that is, and how people address the board. Do we have to make any changes to that? Do we entertain a motion to adopt that?
I can make a motion for rules and procedures.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Investment policy. There's no changes on that, our sen?
No changes.
I thought you were gonna invest it in my bank. Guess I didn't, I guess I didn't lock out it.
I heard you already had it.
Okay.
Locked out, it's not too much.
We need to read that, Phil?
No, we don't. The only change that was made, and it was a year or two ago, was our depository making Evergreen and Champlain National Banks, other than that, there's been no changes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the investment policy.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? There being noted Scottish laws in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And now we have rules and procedures of the board, and I think we all know what that is, and how people address the board. Do we have to make any changes to that? Do we entertain a motion to adopt that?
I can make a motion for rules and procedures.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. You all have copies and scheduled regular meetings? You know, this one's held at 6:30, and we have a meeting on the 31st of March at 4:15, and then the ones that fall on holidays will be on Tuesdays, and then we have a meeting on Wednesdays after the election at 4:15.
One thing was missed on here, unless you want to change it, the April 3rd, 2006, isn't identified as being at 6:30, do you want to continue that?
Well, not necessarily the budget, it's usually because of...
Organization.
...organizational, I can't see why we can't do that at seven.
I think we should do it at seven. It's really hot.
Look at it, five minutes to seven, we're pretty down to meeting.
So if you want to leave it right like it is, and it's defined, because everything is announced at seven, but I just wanted to point that out, that it was missed.
Because it's a normal meeting, and people get in habit of seven o'clock, and I think, I think we're pulling into the parking lot right now as a matter of fact, so... I'm just saying, you know, it gets to be a habit.
You need more people at the meetings.
I think seven o'clock is fine.
Any other discussion?
I'll move that we accept the scheduled regular meetings.
Second. Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore, any discussion?
If you don't all forget, next April.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Next one's a resolution for mileage. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Village of Rousas Point is pointed in terms of pay fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the village who use their own personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village, therefore being resolved, the Board of Trustees approve the reimbursement of such officers and employees at the rate of 34 cents a mile. This resolution effective immediately. The following resolution is duly put to a vote, and I put that in front of the motion.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Roll call vote. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And the next letter is Northeastern Central School District, it's signed by Josie Gilroy, Athletic Director, it's addressed to the mayor. Dear Mayor Rivers, Northeastern Clinton Central School District would like to request the use of the Rousas Point Tennis Courts located at the Civic Center. The request of times would be Monday through Friday, from 3:00 to 5:30 p.m., beginning March 21st through May 31st, 2005. The matches start the week of April the 25th. We request that the wind screens be put up prior to that day, if possible. Thank you for your support over the years. Sincerely, Josie Gilroy.
I'll make a motion to allow the high school to use the tennis courts this year.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, is there any discussion?
Should we let Mike know about the wind screen?
Sorry, yeah.
Oh, they are now? Oh, I haven't been over there, so, well, that's great, good. Excellent.
And the last, the next letter I have was not on the...
Why did I get a vote on that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Hey, see what that vacation does?
It does.
Efficiency at its best.
Nor, or worse.
All those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And the next letter isn't on the agenda, it was received apparently Friday afternoon.
It's from Clinton County Department Personnel, it's from Allen Gibson, Personnel Director, it's addressed to the mayor. Dear Mr. Rivers, I would like to invite you and your staff to a training session on your role and responsibilities in administering New York State Civil Service Law on Tuesday, May 24, 2005, from 9:00 to 12:00, or 1:00 to 4:00. At Clinton Community College Stafford Center for Arts and Technology Auditorium, Ms. Mary Carley and Mr. Tom Fountain from the New York State Department of Civil Service Municipal Service Division will conduct the training. This training will give you a better understanding of your role as an appointing authority, this department's role as a civil service agency overseeing your municipality, and the role of the New York State Department of Civil Service in the administration of the New York State Civil Service Law. The training, this training is particularly important for the elected officials, slash appointing authority, town supervisor, mayor, highway superintendent, and other staff who are responsible for preparation and distribution of the municipal payroll. Mary and Tom will conduct the training session twice in the day, so you may pick the most convenient time for you and your staff, please see the directions below. I hope you'll take advantage of this excellent opportunity to learn more about administering the New York State Civil Service Law. Signed, sincerely, Allen Gibson.
I'd like to attend.
I would both attend.
I'll make a motion to allow Phil and the mayor to attend the training, attend the training.
Second. Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore, is there any discussion? There being noted Scottish laws in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's all I have. The report of the mayor and trustees on the agenda tonight, lots of stuff, is the appointments, and, you all have copies of this, I'm gonna have to read it all, certainly, but what I'm gonna do is ask you whether or not you want to go individual motion or a motion to accept them all. Because you don't, you know, because you're gonna go individual, and I'll stop.
Accept them all.
Deputy Mayor will be John Hockrow, term one year. Village Clerk, Bill Beharlock, two years. Deputy Clerk, Carol Conville, two years. Treasurer, our sen LaTerno, thirty days, I mean, two years. Deputy Treasurer, Rebecca Diesel, one year. Attorney, Tom Renee, one year. Acting Village Justice, John Favreau, one year. Budget Officer, our sen LaTerno, one year. Historian, Donald Racine, one year. Youth Commissioner, Ray Perle, one year. Library Board Trustee, James Giroux, five-year term. Billing and coding and zoning officer, Michael Pedro, one-year term. Register of Bible Statistics, Carol Henfield, two-year term. Deputy Register of Bible Statistics, Phil Beharlock, two years. Zoning Board of Appeals, John Mock, five-year term. Clerk to the Zoning Board, Carol Henfield, one year. Depository will be the Evergreen Bank and Champlain National Bank. Official newspaper, the Press Republican. Planning Board, and this is brand-new this year, will be Marianne Burgro, five years. Geraldine Favreau, four years. Shirley Hall, three years. Patricia Racine, two years. Michael LaTerno, one year. And alternate to the Planning Board, Donald Janette, one year. And that is the mayor's appointments. And I need a motion, other than for Deputy Mayor, if that's all right, we'll cover it all in one.
Make that motion to accept the appointments as written by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, is there any discussion?
Just one comment, I know, I had been in contact with the people who would be serving on the planning boards, the reason for the differences in their terms is because this is the first time we will be appointing people, and we use a rolling system at first. All of the terms are five years, so that at the end of five years, there aren't a number of vacancies. We do it in an ongoing manner, so, if Michael LaTerno was to stay after this year, then you would appoint him next year.
Five years.
Right, so they're all considered to be, the five board members the same, it's just that they have a rolling number, just that it turns to the beginning.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Let's discuss this with all the board members, all the, all the commissions will stay the same, there's no change. Police and judicial is Brian and John Hockrow. Fire and code, John Hockrow and Brian. Streets and sidewalks is, I'm gonna say junior, junior more and Kelly Penfield. Water system, junior more and Kelly Penfield. Forest system, Kelly Penfield and junior more. That sounds like a broken record. Electrical system, Brian Jefferson and junior more. Flood control and storm sores, junior more and John Hockrow. Personnel and insurance, John Hockrow and Brian Jefferson. Planning, Kelly Penfield and John Hockrow. Civic, Civic Center parks, beautification, John Hockrow and Brian Jefferson. And library and historian and seniors and youth, Kelly Penfield and junior more.
I'll make a motion to accept the commission appointments.
Second. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Procurment policy.[696.12]
Do you now need a motion to adopt that?
I move we adopt the investment policy.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, is there any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Investment policy. There's no changes on that our side?
No changes.
I thought you were gonna invest it in my bank. I guess I didn't lock out it.
I heard you already had it.
Locking out is not too much.
We need to read that Phil?
No, we don't.
Okay.
The only change that was made, and it was a year or two ago, was our depository making evergreen and shamplin' national banks. Other than that, there's been no changes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the investment policy.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual regular sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And now we have rules and procedures of the board, and I think we all know what that is, and how people address the board. We have to make any changes to that. Any other thing, a motion to adopt that?
I can make a motion for rules and procedures.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Morris, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. You all have copies on scheduled regular meetings? You know, this one's held at 6:30. And we have a meeting on the 31st of March at 4:15. And then the ones that fall on holidays will be on Tuesdays. And we have a meeting on Wednesday after the election at 4:15.
One thing was missed on here unless you want to change it. The April 3rd, 2006 isn't identified as being at 6:30, do you want to continue that?
Well, not necessarily the budget. It seems like they call it an organizational meeting. I can't see why we can't do that at seven.
I think we should do it at seven. It's really hot.
Look at it, five minutes to seven, we're pretty good on the meeting.
So if you want to leave it right like it is, and it's defined, because everything is announced at seven? But I just wanted to point that out that it was missed.
Because it's a normal meeting, and people get in habit of seven o'clock, and I think, I think we're pulling at the parking lot right now as a matter of fact, so... So, I'm just saying, you know, it gets to be a habit.
They need more people at the meetings.
I think seven o'clock is fine.
Any other discussion?
I'll move that we accept the scheduled regular meetings.
Second.
Moved by trustee, uh, Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore, any discussion?
We don't all forget, next April.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, next one's a resolution for mileage. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Roust is pointed in terms of pay fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the village, who use their own personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village, therefore being resolved. The Board of Trustees approved reimbursement of such officers and employees at the rate of thirty-four cents a mile. This resolution effective immediately. Following resolution, the two will be put to a vote, and I put that in form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
In the mayor votes aye. And the next thing on my agenda is authorize the clerk to publish a public hearing for 418 for Time Warner Cable franchise. Motion made by the mayor and seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion?
Can I ask a question about?
Yeah, contract, Tim Warner. And also going to be, I believe, that the condo agreement's gonna be in there.
We had a public hearing with James Waring, a vote four. Because it's over a year old, we have to do a new public hearing, and one of the options he made, he agreed with me. He has been negotiating, met meeting with Time Warner people in his office within the last few weeks. And he's gonna be meeting with the mayor and I to go over the basic tenants, what's been discussed. Have a public hearing on that night to hear more. It probably will not be finalized that night, but we're getting a step closer.
Will he be here, that evening?
Mr. Renee?
Yeah.
No, I found that out this morning, I was under the impression he was, so he suggested he meet with the mayor and I before the meeting, so we'd be prepared for it.
But he has a problem to go ahead and get it.
That's what he said, but he doubted that it would be settled or anything decided other than discussion that night.
Okay, but at least it's not.
Right, and as after our meeting next Monday with Mr. Renee, I'll kind of highlight some of the issues, and I'll present a few people ahead of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the motion was made and seconded, right?
Yeah.
All those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, that's it for me, I believe. Okay, trustee, trustee Penfield.
Okay, I have a couple of items tonight that are on the agenda. Um, one of them is a copy of a resolution for a secret resolution that the council from EFC has requested. It's a resolution that will be dated April 4th, 2005. It's a resolution of the Village of Roust Point, Clinton County, New York, as to a secret determination. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Roust's Point, Clinton County, as follows. Section one, it is hereby determined that the Board adopting this resolution declares itself to be the lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the regulations promulgated thereon are for purposes of determining the environmental impact of the project described in section three hereof. Section two, it is hereby determined that the project described in section three hereof is a type-two action, which as defined in the regulations described above, will not have a significant impact upon the environment. Section three, the project which is the subject of this resolution is described as follows. Replacement in kind of roof and sludge press at sewer treatment facility in and for said village. Section four, this resolution shall take effect immediately. We need to do this and send, I guess, the certified copy out to EFC, so I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, is any discussion? There'll be no discussion or roll call vote. Uh, trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
In the mayor votes aye.
Um, the second item I have is a similar page of work having to do with the roof and sludge treatment replacement at the sewer treatment facility. It, um, is a letter as requested by EFC with a revised maximum estimated cost of the project. The new total cost would be four million, three hundred thousand bond, proposed issuance to New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. So what we're doing is authorizing our send to sign this on behalf of the village. And it describes the revised maximum estimated cost of the project and the cost of their services for the four point three million serial bond issued. So I'll make a motion that we allow our send to go ahead and sign this on behalf of the village.
Second.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore, any discussion?
Send, anything else we need to know?
Nope, that's it.
What's the interest rate? Is that set?
No. Well, Aaron thought it might be two and a half percent. We have our, we have our conference call tomorrow. With Aaron, myself, Phil, the good friend from Moore, and you have to see him. I'll put them on the wall, I guess.
These are just more details that we need to send him.
Yeah. All paperwork, I have paperwork down there, so.
Any other discussion? We need a roll call vote, net. All those in favor of the vote, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, Aaron, do you want to do your update before we talk about that last piece on St. Luke Street, or should we go ahead and do that first?
No, I think I'll do my little spiel.
Okay.
Is, I believe I mentioned before, the outfall piping is complete, with the exception of the little bit of work that needs to be done to fix the joint that's real loose. First main piping is complete into the new influence building, the north end, south end, and Maple Street pump stations are all connected and pumping into the new influence structure. At this point, all we have left is some minor drainage and cleanup improvements. I believe that is going to start tentatively around April 18th. That depends a little bit on the weather, and if the ground ever dries up enough to make an attempt to do some fine grading. Contract number five, the influence building, I have here is ninety-eight percent complete, but as my walkover tonight, they'd say it's about ninety-nine point five percent complete. Um, there's just a few real minor things left to do, some minor painting and things of that nature. The sludge installation is complete, it's been started up, it runs fine. The town of Ernie are very happy with the final product. The chlorine contact modifications are nearly complete, that should be done by the end of the week. The south end pump station piping modifications are done. The person, the new trunk sewer behind the village office is in and done. That work was completed quite well, with minimal disruption of the village parking. And in general, with the exception of a few odds and ends, it'll be completed over the next week or two. The work on contract five is pretty much done. Electrical work, we're waiting on a few pieces of small ordered equipment, we figure that'll be done in one to two weeks. Complete that contract. The ventilation contract is complete. Contract number eight, which is the trunk sewer cleaning, sealing, inspection, manhole modifications, is, the majority of the piping work is complete, the only thing that remains is sealing the manholes, and now that's starting to warm up. We anticipate the contractor will be on site on the eleventh, assuming we don't get a whole bunch more rain, so. And now for the EFC loan, as, the application is nearly complete. And as our send said, we have our conference call tomorrow to take care of a few small details. The only issue we have with the EFC loan is the OGS easement. As you guys remember, it was quite a process to get approval from OGS and DEC to run the outfall down along the old causeway by the bridge. The way that worked was they eventually gave us a temporary easement for construction. Once construction is done, we then do a final easement, which includes an as-built survey of the outfall. Since EFC is issuing a loan for twenty years, they would like to see that easement, the final easement completed. We're waiting on some more information from them, but the way I look at it right now is I believe they will accept a temporary easement as long as we get them the final easement before the loan closes in July. They're supposed to get back to me with an official determination, but we'll know hopefully in the next week or so.
Do you have a good cap?
It shouldn't be a problem from our standpoint to get the information to OGS. I can't guarantee how long it will take OGS to turn it around and send it to the funding agency, but.
What happens if this holds the money off, though?
Yeah, the worst thing that could happen, and it's not a good thing, would be that they would bump us to the next funding cycle. They know, they know our standpoint on it. I explained to them that the outfall piping was installed in accordance with illegal easement. So they seem to be somewhat understanding this, and we'll find out how things go the next week or so. And that's all I have as an update.
Any outside pressure on?
I don't think it will. But I think we could wait till at least we get a preliminary determination from them, I understand.
Well, we'll keep up to the end.
Yeah.
There's one other issue that I spoke to Aaron about this afternoon, Aaron and Phil and I were discussing this. If you remember last meeting, we authorized an amended change order for the work to be done in the parking lot behind the village office. And it appears that the rest of that work that we had originally planned on with, with our approval on February 7th for the change order, was the work to be done on the other side of Sandy's Deli. And apparently, the original design option that we have is no longer available to us. Or at least at this point, the foreseeable future is not going to be available to us. So, one of the things that Aaron did was check with the contractor, and they would need to go ahead within a couple of weeks if we are going to modify the original design and amend another change order to include a new section of work, basically, instead of going diagonally across the property, we would try to go around the property. Obviously, the problem with doing that is an increase in cost. It requires somewhat of an increase in, in the amount of pipe that would be needed. It would also require an extra manhole and some survey costs as well as some design costs, so... I don't know, getting, getting everything accomplished with the surveying and the signatures that require paperwork in two weeks could be potentially a tight timeframe. However, if, if we're not going to get the go-ahead that we need for the original design, chances are we would have to make a change anyway. I don't know, I guess, throwing it out there for discussion. If we amend the change order again, we came up with an approximate cost of about fifteen thousand. We were hoping twelve to fifteen, but probably closer to fifteen. I don't know. We could go ahead and, and ask them to get this ready to see whether or not we could accomplish it, to give the contract a go-ahead, let's say by the fifteenth. If we are unable to meet that deadline, at least the work and the surveying would be completed for the future, from going ahead and changing the original design.
Is that gonna restrict the flow of all or anything to the designer?
It just makes an extra problem spot, another manhole.
So it's something we would have to do eventually, which is, where we were two weeks ago, basically, was we didn't know where we were gonna be in terms of the property, you know, to the north of Sandy's, so... They've done the work behind the office, but.
The other thing is, if we don't do that in the next couple of weeks, they're gonna get done till this fall anyway.
Well, but the timing, we, we talked through what would have to happen.
Lake level's already come up at about two feet.
Right, but there would be a lot of factors involved, there would be Aaron's time, survey or Tom Renee, contacting people who still would need sign easement, that sort of thing, so two weeks might be tight, but we'd try, and at least the design work and the survey would be done for the new design, even if we didn't meet the deadline when we do it this summer, I don't know, what do you think?
Where's the new design, the design gonna go?
The deadline, my understanding is, correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, instead of diagonally through the property, we'd go around, or go north and then east.
Because we can't get, they won't give us the easement, or?
I think we should actually dig up the old pipe and put it back the way it should be.
I think you better run that guy.
I don't know what that means, that attorney.
You know why? No, they built over the top of our pipe, it's underneath his house. And that's the problem, that's why we need to go around. So if we dig up the old one, we can dig up his house.
We still gotta go on his property no matter what, right?
Yeah, but we have an easement there.
So we can go no matter what?
We can go there.
No, we don't.
We don't have an easement where the old pipe is?
No, we don't.
Oh. Bernie, I, I was told we did. How we did screw that one up.
Long before our time.
Long before us.
And, and, you know, technically, the current property owner does not.
Well, I know, he didn't, uh, he didn't.
Anyway, we're still gonna go on his property. Right, he's gonna sign the easement, what do you? That's what we get told.
Apparently, the, it, the redesign, they prefer the redesigned, yeah.
I was told by our attorney, from spending time back at their attorney, that they would be amenable to something like that short of doing what trustee Penfield was proposing would be, the next step would be a potential court situation.
Amended domain.
Amended a domain, yeah.
And that could take forever.
What about, now you said they built over, the people that own it now?
No, they didn't do it.
Before.
The original, the guy that built the original building built over, right over the sewer. Runs right diagonally through his house.
He's a Canadian, so he's gonna, he's like, wasn't he a Canadian?
He sold that.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm saying, I'm talking to the guy before.
No, we can't do anything about that.
We don't have much.
No, we have the current owners who are here now, so we can't, can't go back, but.
I don't see, my own opinion, I see that we, eventually, we're gonna have to do it to correct this problem. But to try to force it in two weeks?
No, can't do it.
Just, let's, let's do it, but let's just sort of, then we're not, we're not gonna be able to do any construction. And there ain't no way in heck, if you're gonna get that in, the kind of war comes up.
Aaron, this afternoon, correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, but we, of course, as a contractor, if they had the go-ahead in two weeks, they would be okay, is that correct?
They're not looking at the lake level?
Probably not, but, uh.
I'll tell you what, you're gonna, you know, it's, it's a ninety-six point five feet right now, and floods at one hundred.
It's got, still a lot of snow in the house to come to the lake.
And that's what the lake level is right now, ninety-six point five feet.
Well, I guess the real issue is whether or not we're gonna ask Aaron, I'm sorry, Phil, go ahead.
No, one, just one thing I want to, if, if we were to get lucky, if we can get everything done within the two weeks, it's my understanding the cost of this could be incorporated in the EFC loan.
I understand that.
Which is.
Right.
We're, we're being very optimistic, Kim, I'll tell you that.
No, we know that, but it's.
Well, but it, really, it's approving the redesign and giving Aaron the approval to go ahead and get it surveyed and so on.
I think we gotta do that.
And if we do that, to me, there's no sense in not trying to get it accomplished, so that we can give them the go-ahead in two weeks. If we can, great.
At least we'll have to design if we can.
Exactly.
And I gotta say.
Yeah.
We got to lose on it.
The right way to do it, go around it.
Not the right way to do it. Well, not the right way to do it, the right way to do it's the original design for the flows. Yeah, but we're not gonna get it. I don't have heartbreak test for if the.
Try it.
The board wants to, I mean, gotta approve it anyways, but I'm just saying, try to, I think they're gonna beat their head against the wall, that's my own personal.
Okay, I don't, but two weeks is enough time.
It'll be close.
They can talk.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion authorizing Aaron to amend the change order again, I guess. And I guess what he's going to do is, is go through and write a, a new change order, at an approximate increased cost of fifteen thousand to, um, obviously, that will be less, if the construction, the cost right now at least will be less, the construction cannot go forward, but to at least get the survey done and to redesign with the plan that we spoke up this afternoon.
Second.
Okay. Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore, any more discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye, roll call, roll call vote, trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye.
It'll go past.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Penfield, trustee Jefferson. Okay, I have a couple items on the agenda tonight. Uh, last year, the board established a one-year temporary part-time position of the Director of Community Development. The position was authorized for up to twenty hours per week, and we appointed Melissa McManus to the position of provisional basis, on a provisional basis. Melissa's done an excellent job, outstanding job in her capacity as Director of Community Development for the village and the community as a whole. She's easy to work with, she's very organized. So tonight, I'd like to make the motion to change the status of the Director of Community Development position from a temporary to a permanent part-time position, up to twenty hours per week. And appoint Melissa McManus on a permanent basis, based on her ranking first on the county civil service list for the title with an effective date of April 18th, 2005. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore, is there any discussion? Is the fund still coming out of grants for this?
In part, as we discussed, we're, we're trying to optimize the grants, pay as much as we can. But there's no assurance that a hundred percent right now, I'm estimating fifty to seventy-five percent will be reimbursed by grants.
Money well spent, so we're doing good.
Might be anything back.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm not opposed, but I can't vote, so, for obvious reasons.
Understand, so, Melissa, how much you paid me? I will back. Okay, and the second item on my agenda tonight is we've received bids for the nineteen seventy-nine fire truck. The two bids were received, John Mock from Mocksmarine bid five hundred dollars. Richard Smith, International Water, Waters Distribution, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. He sent a one hundred deposit, a hundred dollar check, deposit check, was enclosed with his bid. Now, we've talked about this before, and Timmy says, or Brian says, this truck is worth ten thousand dollars, at least. Now, if you can get ten thousand for it, great, I hope we can, but George said the tires alone are, we started. There's, uh, there's six brand-new tires, six brand-new tires and rims on that truck that are, that are worth about, uh, I don't know, tires, tires were about three hundred dollars apiece.
And we're talking, I mean, thousands of dollars right here.
The rims, and because of the type of rims that was on it, where you couldn't buy tires for them, and you had to buy new rims.
It'd be better to sell it, get a lot more than.
Have you discussed anything with the fire department? They've got some things they're, what they want to do.
So, I think what I'll do tonight is make a motion to not accept any of the two bids. And I'll get ahold of Brian and talk with him and go to Plan B.
I have a motion.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Moore, is there any discussion?
Can I ask what, you're talking about when you say about the fire department, is there some interest in a use for the truck, or?
Yeah, they wanna, they wanna take the chemical truck and take the, the tank and the associated gear in the back, and, uh, they say they can, oh, they wanna cut this one down, fit that chemical truck on the back of it.
Can that be done?
I don't know, they're, they're looking at that possibility. So let's, you know, let them do, let them look at it.
It's a couple more weeks.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if, if the fire department can get some use out of it, it certainly makes more sense than giving it away for seventeen fifty.
So we're doing, doing it anyway.
Sooner or later.
You even talk to you about it as well?
No, he's supposed to be back in the day.
They were, they were taking measurements and stuff today.
What do you think is worth doing, Aaron, you're more into doing that than.
What you're bidding on, worth more than that, but can't, nobody wants it for that price, we're gonna do it.
You know what?
All right, we do is strip it and sell it, we can't use it.
That's the idea.
Strip it down and sell it.
Strip it, strip it out, sell the tires, sell the rims, sell the engine, sell the transmission, or sell those packages, and transport those packages.
And we can get more money for it.
But you'll probably what?
It's better to see somebody use it, but, boy, I hate giving it away, we paid for that, and then you're just gonna turn around, and, well, we'll just hold that off until we get back to Brian.
What would happen to the, the current chemical truck, then, if they were able to accomplish that?
Junk it, junk it, it's a nineteen seventy-four.
So are we, we're not gonna make a decision out of trying to sell that one, or?
No, no, no.
It's not, it's not worth it.
Nineteen seventy-four.
So you're gonna think of that one part, too?
Three fifty-four.
I think that's gonna be the cat, basically.
It's only the cat left. And that needs, that needs to have new tires and rims and stuff, that ain't a cost, somewhere around four or five thousand to bring that up to snuff. The man a motion's been seconded, any other discussion, to reject the bid. All those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye. All those in favor, vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that's all I have on my agenda tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Jefferson, Trustee Moore.
Uh, one thing, can you, you've been, you've been taking shots at the water project like the first, and that?
Not in a while, because, uh, it was stabilized, so we had...
So, it's been okay?
Well, the last time we checked, but we'll be checking again.
So, no problem with it as of now?
As of...
Nothing changed.
Couple of changes in the best of my knowledge.
I'm done now.
Thank you, Trustee Moore. I'll tell?
Uh, I have just one item. Do...
This will get a little more.
I had it somewhere. Um, this afternoon, in order to accomplish the changeover from Justice Herzog to Justice LeBounty for banking purposes for their accounts, uh, I'm required as clerk to, uh, request approval from the board via this resolution. Uh, it has to do with Champlain National Bank as our designated depository. There gets actually two resolutions. One resolution deals with the bail money that the court handles, and the second resolution for these, this banking activity is for their regular depository. And basically, all this is doing is changing the names on the account from, uh, Justice Favreau, who's our acting village justice, and Justice Herzog, to Justice Favreau and our new Justice LeBounty. Um, it's, it's very, you know, banking-type resolution, there's no, no surprises in it. Uh, there are, we have, we, they're identical, except for the account number that's going to be affixed to them, as they say, one for the bail and one for the regular depository. I'm asking, I've given each of you a copy, that was just received this afternoon, I'm asking one of you to entertain a motion individually, one for the bail money and one for the regular depository, two separate resolutions.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the, the first resolution as far as the banking account number, and we will be changed over.
Second. Motion by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Moore. Any discussion? You need a roll call on that, right? If there's no discussion, roll call. Vote, Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. I need a motion on the bail money.
I'll move that we approve the, uh, resolution on the bail account.
Second. Moved by Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Moore. Any discussion? And no discussion, roll call, vote, Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. That's all I have.
I got one other thing, I'm, I'm sorry, just one other thing, uh, there's a problem with the, uh, the paperwork that's at the village office. The paperwork for the judges have to come here, so, does anybody have a problem with bringing a couple file cabinets here to the judge? You got money to lend back to you, just to keep it locked?
Yeah, that is, anyway, you can do what you want with it.
Oh, that is, oh, okay.
We don't keep that in.
Somebody said, yeah, well, that's...
That's all judge stuff back there.
Oh, all right, okay.
You're talking about the closet, man?
Yeah, just the closet. You've got the only key, then, I know what's on the closet.
Oh, no, Phil's got, we all got keys for that.
No, I didn't have a key for it. You do.
You're talking about the, the door?
It must be important.
Well, the door, I know.
It's shared with the records.
I'm in charge of the record.
Oh, okay. That's a confession.
(laughing).
Okay, so, that's basically what he wants to do, so, it's his box, uh, tell him, you got it, there, there is one in there, it's got to be locked, and make it easier for the clerk.
Okay, okay, our son?
The only thing I have, though, I had a report earlier about the conference call. The other thing is my annual reminder, uh, the utility bill will probably be going out tomorrow's mail, but April thirtieth is the deadline for any unpaid water and sewer required taxes, as a few folks said, you know, pay the water, too.
Thank you. Now, we'll start, oh, no, I got Melissa. Uh, she says she's now full-time, like, part-time, so, what do I go first? Berber's Fire Department.
Berber's Fire Department. Thank you. Um, I, I had put a report in your boxes about, uh, my travel request. This, this comes out of an attempt to try to get more information about marketing the downtown, and it's such a specialized thing for a municipality to try to do this, there aren't a lot of places to go. Lisa Nagel from Alon recommended this Main Street Conference, which, of course, rang the bell, because the, the Main Street people did our quality community training. And so, um, with your approval, I, I would like to request that, to attend the national conference. I did talk to Paula Marshman about using quality community grant money. This is something that the Department of State has allowed some of the other quality communities to do. Uh, the, uh, person in my position in the City of Rome attended the conference last year. So, she said we have two hundred and sixty-one dollars left in the travel line item of our little quality community grant, can use that, and then when we have our products done for the D and H and the design standards for downtown, there'll be money left in the budget if all goes as planned, and we can then just turn in the rest of the bills. So, it should be covered by the quality community grant, cost of, of this trip.
Motion by, uh, Melissa, go on, and, uh, flip the ball, please. Second. Motion made by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Vote, I need to talk to you.
Okay, okay.
Afterwards.
Okay.
I need some information.
Very good, all right. And, uh, I also, we are working on our streetlight plan for Montgomery Street, it's something that we broached with the board at the last meeting. Uh, the mayor and, uh, Cardinal Harwood and I will be meeting, uh, with, uh, Jar Tadich from Alon and, uh, a vendor, actually, that has a product that they'd like us to take a look at for some ornamental lighting on Montgomery Street. Brian is going to sit in, and Doug from the village, it would be great if, if he could sit in, too, uh, on Thursday. What we're thinking about at this point is actually moving the street lighting from the land side, where it is currently on the big telephone poles, to along a lakefront promenade on the, the lakeside, the, the eastern side of Montgomery Street. So, that would extend ornamental lighting, hopefully, right from the downtown, along Montgomery Street, down through the Shoreline Park, and continuing as far as we can afford to put it on Montgomery Street, is the recommendation. So, and, and what we're, we're looking at, and I, I have a couple of old postcards, um, at this point, is something that matches the village's historic lighting, and you can , you know, on hold side of that, and here's a, a picture of, of an old streetlight from the old Martin's Inn, with the idea of, um, uh, uh, no, trying to replicate what was here years ago.
Where'd you get those postcards?
Henry and I started a postcard collection years and years ago over in Champlain, since, uh, we used to buy them all over the place.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Very collectible.
Oh, really? And now, I'm finding I'm using them all the time for the grants, it's great, and it's really handy.
That the old Martin's Inn?
That's it, that's Martin's Inn.
Never liked that quite a lot.
Oh, John has a great, really good collection.
Would it be possible for us to see some of the vendor designs as you're going through this process?
Definitely. Um, we're going, what I've had so far is just a couple of facets have come down from the gentleman in Canada that, that the village has purchased streetlights from in the past. On Thursday, he's bringing an entire binder, and will ask for copies and present those to you as, as possibilities.
Got it?
Okay, um, just a, a quick update, we, oh, and also, we are going to take another look at the Bishop's Crook, the old downtown lights, haven't forgotten about those, a look at those and evaluate what they might be used for. The mayor told me that, that there are some ideas already out there, and, because we, we know we have them and they're, they're valuable, they're still, still around. Um, just an update on the boat launch. The Corps of Engineers has everything they need for the permit, they're really busy, they tell us, but they should have a draft permit for us either this week or next week. They know they only have until April, what is it, thirteenth?
Thirteenth, that's what I want to talk to you about.
Okay.
Because if I don't have it by Monday, I'm going to pack it, and I will talk to John to kill.
Excellent, and I think, I, I don't know if Jim has actually come out and told them that, but we know we have a deadline that we're operating under. Uh, and, and that's it, just, I wanted to thank you very much for the appointment and for the kind words. Um, it really, it's a dream come true for me to work from my hometown, so, I thank you very much.
Dougie? Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
We've just got three things tonight, um, just, uh, I missed Aaron's report, sorry I was late, but on, uh, construction, um, we're just about done. Ken Clancy is only going to be here one, two days a week, here, he'll check in once a week. We're really in the punch list phase, or on the cusp of being in the punch list phase, and what Ken is trying to do is he's trying to make sure the punch list is as small as possible, so that things will get done. I understand next week the divers are coming back to finish that line, so, so we'll swim on that and make sure that that is the way it's supposed to be after they're done, or the day they do it, so we can tap them on the shoulder before they leave, if that's necessary. And, uh, also, in relation to the sewer project, I've been working, parent a little on pulling together the document, documentation that is needed for the EFC to close the village's loan, and, uh, whereas, in case of the water project, what we have done as the construction inspection firm was we had every year supplied the board with forecasts and updates on how much time was going to be involved for that fiscal year for construction observation, and, uh, we were able to take that summary and send it in to EFC, they accepted it for closing for the water loan. With the sewer, uh, the tenor of the EFC perhaps has changed or something, and so Aaron felt it was best that we not do that again, pull together the various memos that show what the budget consisted of, and, uh, he thought it would be nice if we could just provide a single clean document, just, uh, showing what the budget was and agreement between the village and the construction inspector. So, what I have here is just that, just a simple, short-term agreement, uh, nothing new, the number that's in here is the same budget number that's been carried for the project for the last three years, and so I just will give it to, uh, the administrator for, the board to act on, the mayor to sign, or, any questions?
Detective Swan, copper.
That's the single cop, sorry. And then, uh, the last thing I had is, this Wednesday, we have a meeting with town Champlain, and, uh, I've been asked to attend that, and I just wanted to remind the board that, uh, several years ago, I was asked to do a water rate analysis, uh, to not only look at the water rate, but also to look at what the village charges for, uh, within the district and outside users. And, uh, I did a comparison of the village to other municipalities in the North Country, came up with a simple statistical representation showing, um, how your code ranked with others, and, uh, so I'm going to share that information with, uh, the village administrator, and urge that, uh, members of the board, uh, see Phil, to take a look at that stuff and refresh your memory, or for those of you who weren't on the board at that time, take a look at it perhaps for the first time, to see how reasonable your code truly is and your rates truly are, and that I think personally, um, and as has been shown by state calculations, the water rate is very favorable in this village, and that, um, outside users, sometimes when they hear the word double, they flinch automatically, because they hear double, but two times zero is zero, and, uh, so if you've got a low rate, two times a low rate, it's still a low rate, and so, I encourage you to at least look at the work that I did previously, uh, for you, and, uh, that might help, uh, me, and I said. Any questions?
I just have a couple things on that, so, I mean, just my feelings on it, first of all, uh, the people in Champlain are all our friends. People in Champlain need water. We have a lot of water, so, right now, we're not getting anything from them. All I can see is the more customers we have, the more people paying for our water, it's going to reduce our costs, so, that's why I talked with George, and I've talked with Phil, uh, you know, it's like I said to George, I said, if there was a fire in Champlain, and they needed us to go to Champlain, we'd go. Well, they need water, there's a problem with the water at the school district, for all our kids go to school there, so, I think it's really important if we can try to work a deal where we can get water to Champlain. You know, we talked about it before, and it's quite a bit of money. Doctor Racine talked to me, we want water on Route Eleven, they want water at the school, they want water in Champlain, so, I'm hoping we can come to an agreement, you know, just to cut our costs out. I don't want to see the village get screwed or anything, I don't want to sell the fire, but the more people, the more customers we have, the better for the home, so, I hope we can, you know, just come up with something.
School is getting watered.
We get water from Champlain?
They get water from Champlain, we have it at work, we don't even drink the water. I mean, it's terrible. I wouldn't want my kids...
They already ran the pipe, they...
I know, I know.
They never even talked to us, Brian.
I know, I know. Well, I, I don't know what the reason, we went in, we found a blasting cap there, we brought a dog in just to, for search, and we found where they had to blast through all this and spend all this money, but what do you think's paying for that? That's all us, it's all our school taxes and stuff. It was a poor, poor decision by the school board to go to Champlain, they ne- never came to us and talked to us, so, I'm hoping that the communication lines, we can open them up, and I've talked to Bruce Wallett a number of times, and Jules Trani, and, and they want our water, so, that's just my own personal, uh, opinion. Okay, that's all I have on that.
Anything else?
Thank you, Doug. Seeing that we need this professional services agreement as part of, part of our EFC application,